They ran away with it.
So moved.
Called to order the President, Board of Trustees, roll call.
Trustee Wojkowski, trustee Bonucci, trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassich, Mayor Collins.
Here. If we could rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
I just had one quick one. Yesterday, I went and spoke with the junior football, Plainfield Junior Football League, and there was one of their coaches gonna retire, Daryl Castleman. And he's coached for 28 years with them, so they had a surprise for him and a little dedication and a few people had to speak, and it went wonderful, and I just want to congratulate the gentleman for all his volunteering time. That's all.
I just had one quick ones. Knowing Thursday is Thanksgiving, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. Hopefully, everybody gets a chance to spend some time with their family.
Same as well. In addition, those that are gonna be going out and celebrating, please don't drink and drive. Thank you.
Also, remember those who unfortunately are working, the police and the fire, who are, don't get to spend times with their families. Keep them in mind as well. Thank you.
I'd like to say congratulations to Plainfield North Football Team. They're in the state finals. There, I think we got some North students back here. They're playing, I guess, next Saturday for all the marbles, so good luck to them, and they're making Plainfield proud.
Are there any other trustee comments? This would be the time for public comments. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Ed Kozierowski. I live at sixteen, six fifty Fox Run Circle, and that's the Bills of Fox Run. I made an, a previous, I was up here previously, and I were still concerned about Wilcox Development, based on the ordinance submitted by and approved by the village. They have done some things around the development that need to be done. They need the final coat for the street, which was done, curbing was done. However, we're missing some items, and our biggest items, we're missing like forty-five trees that are in your ordinance, and that the development was approved on. In addition to that, we had an aerator, two aerators in our ponds, and they were supposed to be a certain size. They weren't. They reduced the size, so there's a differential on that. And the final thing is the wetlands, and they were cattails when we received it, and they haven't done anything on it yet. We made a proposal to them for a certain dollar amount. You need that dollar amount, I'll tell you now, but as of yet, we've had no reply. I, all we're looking for is for our problems to be remedied. Once it's remedied, then they can get out, and we don't care. But until that's done, what we're concerned about, still concerned about, is the fact that you're sitting on their bond, and we don't want that bond to go anywhere until these issues are resolved. That's all we're asking for. So, thank you very much. Have a good evening. Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you, sir. John, do you have a?
Well, just for, for the residence information, for the mayor and the trustees, Public Works Planning, Building Department staff have been meeting with the HOA representatives, as well as representatives from the developer. I did speak with the developer today and got an update. They will be emailing the HOA, so we're aware of the issues, and we're actively working to address them.
Are there any other public comments? Nothing. We'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on November seventh, bills paid and bills payable reports for November twenty-first, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for October.
Some move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through C under the consent agenda. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is vacation of Massey Avenue. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two eighty-four, granting approval of the vacation of Massey Avenue north of Robert Avenue.
Some move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I'm sorry, I just had one quick question. If I understand vacations, is it, does the property then default to the two adjoining landowners? Frequently, is that the way?
That's correct. The typical course would be to have the right-of-way divided down the center line, and so the, in this case, it's north-south. Property to the west would receive the west half of the former vacated right-of-way, and township being the property to the east would receive the east half. The township did conduct some title work to verify that that was appropriate. They've coordinated with the property owner to the west, and the property owner is interested in receiving the west half of the right-of-way.
So it will be split as normal?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Nothing. Motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-two eighty-four, granting approval of the vacation of Massey Avenue north of Robert Avenue. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is one forty-eight fifty-eight South Flanders Lane. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two eighty-five, granting approval of a variance to permit a patio to encroach into the side yard setback of the property commonly known as one forty-eight fifty-eight South Flanders Lane.
Some move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
One, one comment. I have no issue with the encroachment, because you can hardly see the patio, but that seems to me that should be a key lot, 'cause the back of the house is very visible all the way down the street, and maybe as we do more developments, we can make sure we pick up the key lots so that they properly are landscaped and been a little bit better. This is just artifact of the turn, and half the house is very visible. It's not ideal, but I have no issue with the variance at all, though. It's appropriate.
Are there any other comments or questions? If not, the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-two eighty-five, approving a variance to permit a patio to encroach into the side yard setback for the property commonly known as one forty-eight fifty-eight South Flanders Lane. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is one forty-nine eighteen Southeastern Avenue rezoning. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the plan commission, as the findings of fact of the board of trustees, and furthermore, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of the map amendment, rezoning from R-one to I-one, for the property commonly known as one forty-nine eighteen Southeastern Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is warehouse district plan development. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the plan commission, as the findings of fact of the board of trustees, and furthermore, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of a plan development to regulate uses in the I-one zoning district for the properties at one forty-nine oh-three South Center Street and one forty-nine twelve and one forty-nine eighteen Southeastern Avenue, subject to the stipulations noted in the staff report.
So moved.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Question. I, I think the plan commission requested several things be deleted from the normal approved. I think those things were taken out as far as the plan development.
That's correct. So, in the interim period between when the staff report was prepared and the consideration at the plan commission, staff worked with the applicant to eliminate a convenience store, grocery store, supermarket, and tavern. In addition, at the plan commission meeting, there was some discussion of the proposed liquor store use. It's not the applicant's intent to have a general liquor store, but they anticipate the possibility for a specialty shop of some sort, and at the plan commission's recommendation, that use would now require a subsequent special use request that would be considered by the plan commission and the village board on a case-by-case basis. So that is how the current plan development is structured.
Okay, thank you. I thought those things were important, so I took care of.
Are there any other comments or questions? Nothing. Motion was made and seconded to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval of a plan development to regulate uses in the I-one zoning district as identified. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the 2016 tax levy. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to acknowledge the preliminary estimate of the 2016 tax levy, the amount of six million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you. That motion carries. Administrators report?
None tonight.
Management Services report?
Good evening. I have one item for consideration tonight. As was discussed at last week's meeting, what you have in your packet is a proposal from Granicus, who is the provider of our software for the agenda and packet management. This is for live streaming meetings on the internet. Currently, we are streaming the meetings, but it's after the fact, so it's going up through YouTube and going out onto the internet probably a day or so after the meetings actually happen. So this is live streaming. The proposal in the packet is a upfront cost of three thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty cents and a monthly subscription cost of five hundred dollars per month to implement the program. The IT director couldn't be here tonight, but if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them, and, but the recommendation is to move forward to bringing live streaming to the village.
Now, the sample we saw this week online was impressive. The one question I have is, there's gonna be archives too. You gonna archive any of the history, or you just going forward?
Correct. It'll be archived. Historically, I believe we have that ability. As far as where it'll be located, we'll probably have a folder for that as well.
That might be worth considering, archiving six months' history.
Yeah.
Just to have a starting point, but it's a very impressive program.
Yeah, it's currently available to pull up the video from the past meetings, so I don't foresee that an issue.
Are there any comments or questions?
I just have one minor comment. This particular service is a service that is being provided by the village of Plainfield. It is not mandated by law. It's a service that costs us money, so this is use of your tax money, and it's a very valuable service, because a large number of people have asked for it, and we complied, and so a lot of work went into it, and thank you for having it.
One brief comment. Will staff be able to access and actually see what the usage is from the public utilizing the service, so we can justify it moving forward and say, okay, it's been one year, it's been two years, and we have this many people actually accessing it, or?
Yes, and we'll be happy to provide that information in ti, as it develops.
Excellent. I think it's a great idea, and I'd still like to see some sort of raw data then, you know, as time goes on.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Nothing. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the purchase of a Granicus streaming appliance and professional services at a cost of three thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty cents, and to authorize the monthly subscription of five hundred dollars per month for video streaming and archiving.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Engineers report?
No report, thank you.
Planning Department report?
No report.
Building Department report?
We have the Building Department and Code Enforcement report for October. Glad to answer any questions.
Public Works report?
No report.
Police Chiefs report?
Thank you. I have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one is I'm seeking board's approval to authorize the purchase of thirty-eight, two hundred fifty-dollar Target gift cards for our annual Shop With A Cop that would total nine thousand, five hundred dollars. If you recall, we've been doing Shop With A Cop for several years, where we work with the Plainfield and Oswego School Districts to basically try to bring a happy holidays, a Merry Christmas to children, students within the Plainfield and Oswego School Districts. This is money that is raised by our officers and through donations. One of the big fundraisers we have every year coming up on December second is the annual charity basketball game, where our officers go out there and take a beating, and then raise money for the, for the Shop With A Cop. So, I am seeking board's approval for the authorization to purchase those thirty-eight, two hundred fifty-dollar Target gift cards for Shop With A Cop.
Some move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to authorize the purchase of thirty-eight, two hundred and fifty-dollar gift cards for Shop With A Cop. Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you, and just in addition to that, we'll be doing our annual Shop With A Cop this year on Friday, December twenty-third, at Target. The second item I have is the request to seek board consideration of a motion to authorize the village president to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Westcom for Starcom radio services. What this is, is an intergovernmental agreement to basically redefine our entire radio system. We're not switching from Starcom that we've been on for over ten years, but it's gonna be, excuse me, an IGA to upgrade our entire, entire cache of radios. Commander Ken Ruggles has moved to the front desk. He's been working extensively on this project since early in the year, and although it is a little unusual to have a PowerPoint presentation to try to explain what we're looking for, this is a very in-depth project, and as I mentioned, Commander Ruggles has been working extensively over the last several months, so he has several points he'd like to touch base on. Most significantly with this project, and Commander Ruggles will point it out, is there will be a significant savings to the village because of this intergovernmental agreement. But with that, I'll turn it over to Ken at this point.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and trustees. As the chief had explained, you do have a memorandum and an intergovernmental agreement in front of you tonight. Basically, that intergovernmental agreement authorizes the village and Westcom, which is our dispatching company, to engage in a contract with Motorola Incorporated for radio services. Currently, we are a member of Westcom. They dispatch for twenty-one agencies, including the Plainfield Police Department. All of those agencies, with the exception of the police department, our police department use a VHF analog radio system, which is rapidly becoming out of date and needs a lot of maintenance. So, our actual system that we use is the Starcom twenty-one system provided by Motorola. We entered into that in December of two thousand and six as a separate contract underneath the statewide contract for Starcom twenty-one. We are considered a municipal user, as opposed to the state police, who also use it. So, the aging VHF systems have become very expensive, and to maintain them with the current grade of service required for all the agencies that are members of Westcom is a problem. So, under the FCC narrowbanning of two thousand and thirteen, that reduction in the bandwidth for all these systems created an increased interference issue, along with decreased performance. And so, over time, what happened was the Westcom Operating Chiefs Committee established a technology committee in two thousand and fifteen to look into options to solve these problems. As that committee investigated it, we came up with six possible solutions. The first one was to stay on the systems that all these agencies are members of. That did not include us, the village of Plainfield Police Department. Make the repairs necessary for those systems at a cost of approximately four point three million dollars. Option two was to join the new Will County EF Johnson system that was being built at the time. As we investigated those, and I can get more into it in a little bit, the cost was estimated at five point one million dollars to make that system fit our needs. Option three was to join Starcom each individual agency, as Plainfield had done years prior. The cost was approximately eight hundred thousand dollars per year, not including the radios and such that each of the other agencies would have to buy. Westcom could also, as the fourth option, build its own system. Again, we were looking at about four point two million dollars. We could partner with Grundy County to our southwest, who is also experiencing the same issues with radios currently and in desperate need to upgrade their systems as well. Sharing the ownership of a dual system came to approximately eight point five million dollars. And then, the last option that these groups looked at was to actually have Westcom and Grundy County partner together, engage Motorola Incorporated in their own contract negotiation for Starcom underneath but outside of the statewide contract. Estimated cost was just under a million dollars for the improvements necessary in the Westcom area and Grundy County, and then a six dollar per radio per month fee over time. In order to compare all these things, we looked at them on a per-radio-per-month cost basis, which is the same model that Motorola currently uses for Starcom. It's what Plainfield PD currently engages in. We would compare all of them to that basis in order to make an accurate comparison. As some of the agencies in Westcom are larger than others and have a greater fleet of radios, it was felt that that was the best way to get a true comparison over the unit cost. We'd also have to look at the coverage of the entire Westcom footprint for all the agencies, all twenty-one of them that contribute to Westcom. We'd also have to make sure we understood the maintenance costs of any systems that we looked at, and what it would cost to buy the new equipment to go to those systems. So if we look at each individual option over the time, option one, staying where we were, actually had less capacity due to the narrowbanning, increased interference. We're also highly dependent on microwave, least telephone communications and such between the tower sites to the tune of approximately forty thousand dollars per year and steadily increasing. The industry overall is moving away from analog VHF and going to digital. It's true of almost every technology field right now. We would need additional VHF spectrum, which is almost impossible to obtain in the VHF area right now, as most of that spectrum has been eaten up by public safety agencies. There's no single channel for interoperability across any of those agencies, and again, we'd be looking at about four point three million, or roughly almost fifty dollars per radio per month. We'd still have the maintenance costs associated with that system in addition, and we could plan to repeat that process about every five to ten years. So that was cost prohibitive. Will County's new system unfortunately does not quite meet our design needs at the moment. It's designed to a ten dB design limitation. That's a street-level coverage measurement. Our current under Starcom is guaranteed at sixteen dB or better and increasing. Again, there would be additional build-out costs to make that system fit Westcom needs, as it's currently not designed for the additional fourteen hundred users. Again, five point one million to make the upgrades, approximately a little over fifty dollars per radio per month is what it came to. As is the Plainfield model that we currently use is with Motorola on an individual basis, again, we pay roughly thirty-four dollars per radio per month currently. That is our, excuse me, our cost for purchasing new radios is at twenty-five percent off MSRP. Each agency would have to separately negotiate and engage in a contract like that, which would make it difficult to do, and the system maintenance and such thankfully is all included in Motorola's fees. But again, each agency would have their own individual contract. We didn't know what those exact terms and conditions would always be. They are governed by the statewide master contract, but each agency would have its own thing for purchasing. Westcom, again, could build its own system. Again, we'd have to acquire additional spectrum, upgrades, expansions, maintenance, everything was our cost, and the ongoing repair and such, we'd still have to do over the lifespan of the system. Again, we were looking at about fifty dollars per radio per month. We could also partner with Grundy County, as I said previously, and try to build a two-county, basically, system. It almost doubles the cost of the build-out. However, based on the number of users, then the cost per radio would decline. So, we'd have an eight million dollar build cost, split between all the agencies that make up the Grundy County Dispatch Center and Westcom. However, in the end, the thirty-three dollars and ten cents would be the ongoing charge for that over time. Finally, reaching out to Motorola, we began to explore the possibility of a separate contract. Westcom and Grundy combined gave us additional purchasing power, obviously, with the number of users and radios. The future of software and hardware costs would be included, as Motorola maintains Starcom system under the fees that it charges. The coverage and capacity are guaranteed under the statewide master contract. As I said, we currently enjoy greater than sixteen dB building coverage. What that means essentially to Plainfield is, when we initially went to Starcom in two thousand and six, we had difficulty transmitting out of our own police department, our government structures, the big box stores along Route fifty-nine, anything with large-span steel and concrete structures. Most especially, that included our schools. Over time, Motorola has built out the system to our needs. In addition, Joliet, Romeville, other agencies around us have also gone to this system and enjoy extensive coverage way beyond the sixteen dB currently. We can talk in all our schools. We can talk in our police department. We can talk in all our big box stores. So our coverage is exceptional right now. The additional improvements that would be made under this proposed contract would only make our service better. We also enjoy interoperability with the state police. Obviously, everybody else, if they went to this system, would enjoy interoperability with us. Joliet, Romeville, DePage County is almost entirely on Starcom now. AIMA, Ileas, Mabus, all the statewide assets and other federal communication systems are already pre-programmed into these radios, allowing us to talk to just about anybody we need. As we initially began the contract exploration, it came to a roughly twenty-dollar per radio per month basis. The fourteen fourteen you see up there right now, per radio per month, is actually what the final has come to, so it's dropped from there. Why are we partnering with Grundy County? As I explained, they have similar problems with their current system. Cooperation provides us a much larger economy of scale to do the purchasing and to lobby Motorola for better pricing. The joint system provides improved interoperability across the southern and western ends of Westcom. All the costs are gonna be equitably split, and it further drives down the fees, as I explained. So what is the proposal before you? Let's consider one very large project by Motorola. Basically, we need seven additional tower sites over the two areas. Three in Grundy County, three in Westcom, and one shared site basically on the border between Westcom and Grundy County. The total for those improvements is one point eight million. Westcom and Grundy would equally split that fee. It would be turned into an impact fee per radio. In other words, each user would pay their share based on the number of radios they have on the system. It works out to eight dollars and twelve cents currently. The impact fees would be paid for the first eight years of a proposed ten-year contract. After that, there would be no additional infrastructure improvement fees, and our rates would go down to simply airtime. The airtime itself is what we pay for the service every month per radio to be on that network. Motorola quoted us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar port fee, as they called it, for all of Westcom and Grundy, regardless of users. Divided amongst the subscriber radios, it comes to six dollars and two cents. Again, currently, we pay thirty-four dollars per month. Motorola did ask for a one point seven percent escalator to those fees over time, beginning in two thousand and twenty and continuing throughout the remainder of the contract. We'd also like to purchase new radios. Majority of Westcom is not on the Starcom network, and the radios they currently have will not work with Starcom. The difference is over the spectrum bandwidth, one hundred megahertz versus seven hundred, eight hundred megahertz. The two radios just don't work together well. So, we did have to make a commitment to purchase a total of fourteen hundred new radios or more between Grundy County and Westcom. The incentives for signing the ten-year contract could be applied to the purchasing price of those radios, however. As I said earlier, the statewide contract is currently twenty-five percent off MSRP. When we applied those incentives with Motorola, we managed to get the actual purchase for the radio itself down to forty-six percent off MSRP with accessories such as antennas, mics, et cetera. down to forty-six percent off MSRP with accessories such as antennas, mics, et cetera, at twenty-five percent still. Motorola's business plan is basically a pyramid turned upside down. It's a three-part thing with impact fees, port fees, and new radios. If you make adjustments to one, it tips the triangle, so to speak, towards one end, and they make adjustments to the other two in order to get their business model back to where it belongs. So any changes we made adjusted the entire package. We continued to work on this until we resolved that the greatest hurdle to all the agencies in Westcom is the actual purchase of the new radios based on their cost. So the majority of the incentives were applied to this to get that forty-six percent off. So what does this all mean to Plainfield? Well, currently, we use Motorola XTS XTL radios. All of ours are between ten and fourteen years old at this current time. The end of service date has been announced by Motorola for these radios as December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Basically, what that means is there will be no more upgrade or repair through Motorola, and parts will become increasingly difficult to find for these radios. We kind of, we saw this coming several years ago. Approximately four years ago, we began to replace our aging fleet at the tune of four radios per year. The cost is somewhere between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars per radio estimate. At the current rate we're replacing, it'll take us roughly fourteen fiscal years to replace all of our outdated radios to the tune of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars plus. And the statewide contract also is up for renegotiation in two thousand and twenty-one with a conclusion date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. As we all know, with contracts, there's generally some cost increase. Under the new proposal, we could actually replace all of our radios in the first year of the contract with the same radios we've been purchasing the last four years. The new radios provide better ergonomics, more intuitive operation. It eliminates a problem that we've seen with maintenance with the battery mating to the radio, which is roughly thirty-three percent of our repairs the last three years. It has full feature integration with the Starcom twenty-one network, which includes high-security Bluetooth, encryption, Wi-Fi remote-capable programming, integrated GPS. And the good news is basically all of our partners in Westcom would be using the same type of radio, so there'd be interoperability and easier repairs and purchasing. Again, we get to replace all of our radios in the first year of the contract. After applied incentives, the total came to one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and some dollars. We get to split that over two fiscal years, however, so we could make payments in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, half each, coming to just under ninety-five thousand dollars. A cost savings to the Village of Plainfield, sixty-three thousand dollars just for equipment over the life of the contract. We also gain, as I've said, better interoperability with all of our neighbors. We still have limited interoperability with Will County, which we currently do have, again, to a limited basis. Westcom technicians would be able to help us making repairs and reprogramming. The reprogramming can now be done over Wi-Fi, so instead of having to bring every radio into the police department and pay a third-party vendor to sit there and touch each and every one of them to reprogram them, we can actually put the new radio program out over Wi-Fi. The radio comes into the police department, gets into the Wi-Fi network there, and downloads the new programming without anybody having to physically touch it. Huge cost savings to us as far as third-party vendors, and Westcom again would assist with that. So in summary, the benefits to us under this new contract proposal are a ten-year contract instead of fourteen years, depending on the negotiation of the new contract with the statewide one. New radios in January and February of two thousand and seventeen. We make the two payments over two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. We get all the benefits of the enhanced coverage from the new infrastructure and towers. Our impact fee and our port fee or airtime fee goes to a total of fourteen dollars and fourteen cents. Slight modification of that for the one point seven percent escalator over the life of the contract. However, again, the impact fees for the new infrastructure would fall off eight years into that contract, and then we would only be paying the adjusted airtime. To show you those cost comparisons, you can see here, for equipment, we have a savings. For airtime, we have a substantial savings over the life of this contract. We do pick up the impact fee for the infrastructure improvements, but it's a trivial amount compared to our airtime. And combined, you see we save more than half our money for this new option. Another way to look at it for fiscal year expenditures, in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, with the new contract, we do have a large spike to afford the new radios. However, then, that money falls off. We are then paying the impact fee and the airtime fee. And as you can see, in two thousand and twenty-four, the impact fee falls off. The airtime fee remains the only cost we have for the last two years of the contract. Obviously, we'd have to renegotiate then. In comparison to the old contract, the red line, you see our expenditures are relatively flat, provided we continue to build or buy new radios at the same rate. However, we do have the contract renegotiation at two thousand and twenty-two. The falloff you see there on the old contract is we don't buy the same number of radios each year. As we get towards the end, we would taper that off, so those costs would decrease. However, we should also assume that the end of fourteen years, our initial radio purchases will probably be due for replacement again, and we'd just be repeating the process. So again, to get down to the numbers for it, the current Starcom twenty-one contract, new radios are two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars and change. We pay thirty-four dollars a month, so the total over fourteen years is seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars plus. The new contract as proposed is new radios at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars a month, fourteen fourteen per radio, again, that adjusts slightly over the life of the contract, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars total over ten years, or roughly a fifty-eight percent savings to the Village of Plainfield. There are a few other additional items that I'd like to mention to you. There is a state appropriations clause in the user agreement for Motorola that is being offered to us. Should the state of Illinois with its budgetary issues have problems paying for Starcom twenty-one, we were able to negotiate that Motorola would continue to provide us at the negotiated prices and would keep the service online for us regardless of what happens with the state. I should also mention that we still have dispatching fees to Westcom that covers the manpower, human resources, and all of the infrastructure of Westcom. Those fees would potentially decrease over the life of this contract because we would no longer be dependent on the number of leased telephone lines, microwave services, et cetera, under Starcom. So there is a potential cost savings there as well. And then in closing, I'd like to point out that the Westcom agencies appear to be moving this direction regardless of us. Majority of them have either approved this IGA already or are working to approve it this month. They are coming to the same system we use, they're just doing it at a cheaper price. We have the opportunity right now for Motorola to let us out of our current contract with no additional costs. They were very enthused about bringing us in as a Westcom agency. They looked at us and said, you're one of the founding members of this radio system. You've been there for the long haul. We want you to come on. I think they also understood that if we didn't come along, the rest of the Westcom agencies were going to want to know why. And so they did reach out to us, they made sure that we were complete in the transfer of this. They've offered us a few additional incentives on the trade-in, so the number of radios we're actually replacing is the exact identical number we need. We currently have eighty-one radios total between Pima and the police department. We needed to replace fifty-three outdated radios. They're actually offering us a slight additional incentive that will lower the cost for twenty-two of those radios across the board. So the math doesn't quite work if you've been trying to figure that out. There's additional incentive as a trade-in, so to speak, for our outdated radios. They definitely wanted us to come across as part of the Westcom family. They looked at it, they made it attractive to us even beyond what the others are doing for us to be a part of this. And as I said, the rest of them are going to come along. We have the opportunity to save a lot of money, stay where we are, get a better service out of the deal. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Couple of questions. What percent of Westcom are we, forty percent roughly?
Not even. Bolingbrook has joined Westcom now and is a much larger agency, whereas we used to be the largest police agency in Westcom. We are not anymore. Bolingbrook is there. Our calls for service, as the chief has found to pointing out, have declined over the years as have our, you know, part one crimes and stuff like that. So our actual number of calls for service and such, which is part of the formula that calculates the total cost per agency, have gone down. So we are no longer the biggest kid on the block in Westcom, it's now the city of Bolingbrook.
Nice to know. Nice analysis, very thorough and so on, all the details and pricing and so on. The only thing that you haven't really touched on, you're now in a single basket if you have a single provider. How reliable is Motorola going to be? Motorola's had its problems over the years, and I don't know where they stand in this particular part of their business.
When we joined Starcom in December two thousand and six, I can tell you every single officer on our department hated it. We had interference issues, we had connectivity issues, all sorts of things. Motorola has worked with us, the first few years were very painful. We are now at a, at a level of service that is unheard of. Westcom as part of this deal actually got ahold of four Starcom radios that they farmed out to the various agencies to test. Every single one of them was amazed at the grade of service currently, and that's before the improvements that are being proposed. The improvements that need to be made are for capacity. In addition to coverage areas, there are some holes in low-lying areas along the river and some other places that some of the Westcom agencies have. Most of ours are covered. Many years ago, we actually had a list of holes in our coverage areas who drove up and down Route fifty-nine. All of those have been addressed. Again, our coverage allows us to penetrate into the big box stores, the steel, concrete span structures, those kind of things. Currently, Motorola's Starcom is one of the best radio systems in our area, in my opinion.
Ken, I think the question wasn't necessarily about the quality of the product from Starcom, but from Motorola, but rather that Motorola as a company has gone through a couple of different machinations and gyrations, namely with regard to their retail products. And so I know that that was a concern that was raised as well by this group, and that Motorola has actually split off into a couple of different agencies, and that this particular, the public safety product line is a separate standalone. Can you speak to that a little bit more? I don't know enough of those details, but I know that that was one of the questions that was explored.
I'm not an expert in that, in the various divisions that they've gone through. I know many years ago that the public safety radio section and their cellular telephone products were joined. Those two were split, as I understand it, their cellular telephone portion of the business is not as successful. The radio portion of it seems to be very stable. As I understand it, they are offering considerable number of products. Those products are considered to be the leading technology in the field. My, I don't know their business portfolio to give you a good round estimate, but we have been dealing with the radio side of that corporation for many years. We have begun dealing with the computer aided dispatch and computering, computer side of that here lately for dispatching. It is showing in the same symptoms, I think, that the radios did at early onset. They're trying to correct some mistakes and bring that system up to par. It's been my experience that if they follow the same path they did with Starcom, that they will achieve it. It's just how long it will take them to work out all those kinks.
Yeah, if I could just add, just to reiterate what Ken mentioned, we have been working with Motorola on several different projects, the radios, the computer aided dispatching, some record-keeping as well. And I can tell you, as Ken also mentioned, on some of the computer aided dispatching and record-keeping, it's still a work in progress by all means. But the radio, since we've gone to Starcom or through Motorola ten-plus years ago, they have absolutely worked tirelessly to ensure that we have the product that we're looking for on the street. And also, as Ken mentioned, when we first went to Starcom, you know, I can make fun of it now, but when we first went to Starcom, you could be looking at the radio tower and you wouldn't be able to hear the radio. That's how iffy it was, and from that point Motorola has absolutely worked tirelessly on the radio portion of it to ensure that we have the product to make sure our officers are safe on the street.
It's important to keep track of that. The one thing that Ken said that seemed to strike a bell with me is the fact he said you have this little pyramid. If you tweak one part of the thing, they got to tweak something else, which says that they're pretty much tied down to a model that they can support. Any significant deviation from that, and you may have a problem. I'd just be careful, watch it. I think what you've done is great. It seemed like they're the leader in the technology. It's always best to go with people who are number one because they got to stay in power where others may not, so. Excellent analysis, but careful, single supplier is a little bit tricky.
I have a question for you, Commander. A statement first, I'm not, I'm still concerned about the duplication of services with the new Will County system as well as Westcom. And in your option two with the Will County system, it said that they would waive the monthly fee per radio. Did they tell you how long they'd waive that monthly fee for?
They did not. That was actually a recent development. When we first approached them, there would be a monthly fee per radio, just like the Starcom model. I don't have the exact numbers because we never actually got to that level of negotiation with them. The problem we saw with the Will County system is that it's currently not built to our specifications. It was not intended for the number of users. And so the infrastructure improvements were the five point one million just to get it to cover the entire Westcom footprint. After that, though, it's still not up to the same grade of service. They did come late this year and offer to not charge the monthly fee for Will County users. Again, there were some other issues too. We were negotiating on behalf of Westcom at this point, which is a lot of agencies that, some of which don't fall in Will County.
Right.
And therefore, were not even able to join that system at this point. So overall, the entire group had to agree on one course of action in order to have the best purchasing power. The fees, as I understand it, the conversation, I think, was intended to bring us back to the table and to say, we'll waive your fees for the monthly, you still have to make the infrastructure improvements to the tune of the five point one million.
So they didn't tell you how long that they would waive the fees for, so that could be contracted out even for five or ten years possibly if we... And does the county system cover the Plainfield footprint? Not necessarily the Westcom footprint, but for our purposes of Plainfield and the fire in the Pima?
It does not cover well into Kendall County, which obviously we are slowly expanding into. And so that would be our greatest area of concern is as we continue to move west, the Will County system would have to be further improved to go further west into Kendall County, which it was never intended to do.
But you're going to go into Grundy County?
No, I'm sorry. Grundy County became a part of this negotiation through the partnership of Westcom. Plainfield's not concerned, obviously, too far into Grundy County on a regular basis. Sometimes we have gone to assist with the tornadoes such as in Coal City, Diamond, those areas, we have sent officers and such. So having coverage in that area is optimal to us, allows us to stay in touch with our officers. But it really is, it's an added benefit at this point for Grundy. Grundy wants to come along with us on this project. Their increased numbers does give us better purchasing when Westcom and Grundy are considered together by Motorola.
But in your presentation, you said there's only going to be one tower in Grundy County.
I'm sorry, no, there's three towers in Grundy County.
You said two towers here, and you said one in Grundy.
I misspoke then, I'm sorry.
There's actually going to be three towers here, three in Grundy County, and then one tower that's going to basically split the two counties. So a total of seven towers.
Okay.
This, I'm sorry, these are the numbers, I must have misread them when I presented them. It's three in Grundy County, three in Westcom, one shared between, and then we currently have the site that Plainfield operates off of.
Okay, was there ever contact made with Will County and/or this new Lareway Road?
Yes, sir. Lareway Road obviously is the project by which the county is building the new sheriff's facility, and they are intentionally building a new dispatch facility now too. They are going to be operating on that EF Johnson system, as I understand it, that's currently being built out. That's the system that Trustee Wojtkowski and I were just discussing as far as build-out costs and the additional site fees, or I'm sorry, airtime fees that they just recently agreed to waive. As you may know, there's also a plan by the state to reduce the number of dispatch facilities within each county. So currently, there's six in Will County. They want to go down to three.
Right.
Westcom, having just built their new facility, having hardened that facility for disaster, storms, et cetera, has all the infrastructure, everything else like that currently that Lareway Road is hoping to build. I have not seen the specs on Lareway Road. I do know that they're trying to bring more agencies in to be dispatched out of that facility, I think in hope of being one of those three remaining dispatch centers.
Do we have any way of contacting, say, Will County and/or Joliet or some of these other units of government?
We, we have spoken. Will County, again, we talked to Will County at length about joining their EF Johnson system. That was the option two here that's on the table. Joliet is already on Starcom. They joined just a few years ago and actually improved our local coverage by building their towers and converting their towers over. We operate off of all the towers that are on the Starcom system. So no matter where we go in the north third of the state, we are covered by any existing Starcom tower. That would continue to be the same under the master contract. The additional towers that we're building are to get the local coverage up to the level of comparison that we desire.
Can we talk to Will County?
We can talk to Will County if we need to.
I mean, do we have a radio that will do it other than this?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. There are channels on the proposed Will County system. There are channels on the proposed Will County system and on Starcom that could be crossed over. And so, the current proposal was, because they both operate in the seven, eight-hundred megahertz, we just needed one channel that we could program into both sets of radios that we could talk upon. That's actually already in the works, it's already planned. We don't currently have it programmed in our radios because some of our older radios just are not handling those new programming plugs well. We just need to deal with them, so...
Well, I congratulate you on your presentation, too.
Yeah, Commander, that is a nice presentation. I have one more brief question. And the option two, it said five-point-one million to upgrade to suit Westcom needs. How much would it be to upgrade to suit Plainfield needs?
Just the Will County system to our needs?
Just to the Plainfield Police and Pima and possibly Fire.
We did not reach out to ask those exact numbers just for Plainfield. I, I don't have an estimate. I would imagine we would have to build our own tower here locally just to handle that or make the infrastructure improvements to the tower behind Westcom currently. Obviously, that tower is owned by Westcom. Putting antennas and such on it for the Will County thing may result in lease fees or something to that nature. That would have to be a separate negotiation as well.
Okay.
You know, Commander, I have just a basic question. You know, you spoke of what does this mean to Plainfield? You know, I, I have a very practical question, the practical application. Does this provide more safety for our officers in the field?
Yes, sir, it does. Again, with each new tower that's erected, our coverage expands, our quality of service on the street gets better. The penetration capability of those radios into the big-box stores, into the shallow areas along the river, those kind of things improve, simply because there's more towers. Radio's not exactly a line-of-sight-type device, however, the closer that line of sight is to the tower, to the receiving point, or to the transmitter, the better it does operate. As the chief said, at one point in time here, we could look at the tower from a couple miles away, try to talk to Westcom and not be able to clearly every time. Those problems have gone away several years ago. The officers who complained in the initial thing that, "Hey, they can't hear me, what am I going to do if I'm in trouble at night?" Haven't questioned that at all in the last roughly five years. So, this is a very dependable system that we're currently on. Again, we're not leaving that system, we're staying where we are. The system is going to improve around us. The big thing with this contract is just simply that we have the opportunity to reduce our costs, stay where we are, and get the new equipment that we need.
Okay. I just basically feel that we have to protect our professional staff, and we have to protect the community. If someone was to call, they have to have a response. There's nothing worse than making a call to someone and no one responding, obviously. You answered the question, your presentation was very in-depth, and thank you. And I think we definitely have to support a system like this.
Thank you, sir.
I, in listening to this, good presentation, thank you. If my takeaway on it, so, new equipment, we get the expedite, which expedites our replacement schedule at a discount, so obviously, we're getting stuff sooner and we're saving money. I know we're not always fortunate to be able to save money when we need to get new, new equipment and our services, so that's obviously a plus. And then, lastly, I think the other benefit I see is you were able to split this into two fiscal years to kind of ease our budgets a little bit, which was, which is very nice as well. So, unless I'm missing something, this seems like, I guess, what some people would say, a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, then I would be seeking the board's consideration to authorize the village president to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Westcom for the Starcom Radio Twenty-One radio services.
That's our motion.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Wojcowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? That motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Jurors' report?
Norpart this evening, thank you.
Reminders?
On November twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, the offices will be closed for Thanksgiving. The twenty-eighth, where there'll be our next committee to the whole. December fifth is our next village board meeting. December sixth is the planning commission. December eighth is historic preservation meeting. And like was already said, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Seeking a motion to adjourn.
She'll move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?